Okay, guys, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting for February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, to order, turn it over to Commissioner Headland, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, the next day, thank you for coming on. I'm giving a certain word because they asked somehow to intervene in this COVID thing and bring this thing from the administration to be addressed. We have to submit a request. Amen.
All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to go through and take a look at the agenda, so I'll entertain the motion to approve, so we can move forward.
You have the motion to approve.
Yeah, can't, all right. Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up, we have two separate public hearings. One is item A, annexation petition twenty twenty-one dash two, Marshall Wiggins, twenty-four sixty-eight Cedar Creek Road. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public and turn it over to Lieutenant Quinter or Mr. Park for the staff report.
Ms. Quinter, are you on the line with us?
Yes, Bill, I'm here. Can you hear me?
All right, yes, we can hear you just fine, and we'll give you the floor, so you can make any comment if you'd like.
Um, yeah, so this is just, this is annexation petition for the parcel at the corner of Hicks and Cedar Creek Roads. Um, they're, Michael Hart's planning on putting in an apartment complex there, and they approached us about annexing into the town.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else to add to that, Ms. Quinter?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, sounds good then. Um, I'll go ahead after that and open it up to comments from the public. Mr. Cordero, if you wanted to, see if anyone's dial in, wanted to make any comments.
Sure. First of all, the clerk, Ms. Madam clerk, did you have any registrations for this public hearing?
There were no registrations.
All right, and Ms. Quinter, I assume that you are joined with the phone number ending in four eight two nine, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's me.
All right, and the only other fifteen professional with us is Ms. Barbara Jones, and so there are no comments at this time unless, of course, Mr. Hertz would like to comment at this time. And that's everyone that's with us. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody in attendance want to make any comments? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing as of seven oh two, and we'll move into item B, which is annexation petition twenty twenty-one dash three, Wiggins Village, Phase Two, Hicks Road. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public and turn things over to Ms. Quinter. Ms. Quinter, do we have anything from you in addition for your staff report?
Uh, no, sir, I think you heard everything you needed to at last month's meeting.
We certainly did. Thank you for that. Um, it's all open to comments from the public. I'm assuming we haven't had anyone else join, and Madam clerk, did we have anyone registered for this as well?
Um, no, there were no registrations, sir.
And we have not had anybody else join with us virtually, sir.
All right. Is there anyone in attendance here that would like to make a comment from the public? All right, hearing done, we'll go ahead and close that hearing as of seven oh three, and we'll move along into citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? I'm assuming since you've already taken a role there, did we have any citizens' comments, Madam clerk?
No, sir, no one else.
All right, I will take that as we have no citizens' comments, and we'll move along into the consent agenda, which isn't too terribly lengthy, but we do have some good action items in there. Uh, the action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on into item six, all business. A is the adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two, Marshall Wiggins, twenty-four sixty-eight Cedar Creek Road. The action requested here is to adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two. Do I hear motion to adopt?
Okay.
All right, we got a first, second, third, and fourth. Uh, is there any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? Motion carries in Anderson. Uh, and item B, under all business, is adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three, Wiggins Village, Phase Two, Hicks Road. The action requested here is to adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three.
Take the motion, Senator.
All right, we got a first and a second there. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in, uh, hearing, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? All right, motion carries there. Uh, item seven, new business. Item A, under new business, is consider forgiveness of payables related to management services rented by the town to the Youngsville Board of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Um, we do have an action, action requested here to approve the resolution as drafted, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Cordero if you had anything that you wanted to add to that. Fireball, open.
Yes, sir. So this is kind of an artifact of the management services agreement that we had with the ABC Board that expired on June thirty of two thousand and twenty. Essentially, the arrangement that we used to have with the ABC Board was that on top of the statutorily required distributions, which are essentially about twenty percent of their revenue, that they, on top of that sum, provide to the town all of their additional profit. And that was just the idea, that we were happy with the store as it was, and we didn't need to make any improvements to it, and there's no additional reason that they would need any of that money. Um, now that the store, uh, the ABC Board really has been a little bit reinvigorated, and we've got all this growth coming out of, uh, the ABC Board, I think rightly, um, for the future of the community, has considered, uh, opening the store on, uh, Capital Boulevard at the Youngsville Crossing Shopping Center, uh, adjacent to Food Line. And so essentially what they're doing is they're saying, well, from that previous year, would it be okay if we kept that additional profit? So basically, what we're talking about is a sum of approximately forty-eight thousand dollars, and that money will be used directly to purchase inventory and purchase equipment and other things that will be used to build the new store and open the new store, which will in turn increase the revenues, which will in turn increase that twenty percent that we get from the ABC store every year. So I think it's a, an excellent move, which is the reason why it's being brought to your attention, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Cordero? All right. Well, like I said, the action requested here is to approve the resolution as drafted. Uh, I'll entertain the motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item B is scheduled public hearing to allow comment on amendments to chapter six of the town code ordinances, solid waste management program, and amendments to the town's speed schedule. The action requested here is to schedule a public hearing for seven P M. on Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Do I hear motion to schedule that public hearing for seven P M. on Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-one?
You don't know the March eleven, I may have made a mistake.
Yes.
It is.
Yes, because March, February calendars are identical.
Yes, make sure the motion is one eleven.
Okay.
And if I, and if I could make a brief comment first, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
If I may. Um, I will call, uh, call your attention to two documents that were in your agenda packet. Um, I would encourage you to deliberate over them, uh, in a bit greater detail in advance of the public hearing, and think about them. Um, the, the point here is to really kind of decide, put the public policy or the town's direction on how it wants to move forward with apartment complexes and a solid waste program. Uh, there's two ways that we can do it. Currently, um, apartment complexes are being treated as commercial entities, and when we think about solid waste, you know, what's the purpose of the program? The purpose of the program is to ensure that the public safety is maintained, the public health is maintained, there's not trash everywhere, that type of thing, but there's also a community appearance aspect to it as well, to ensure that there's not trash on the side of the road that might compete on the right of way, you know, things of that nature. And so, um, commercial businesses are allowed under the current ordinance to contract with vendors directly, and the purpose behind that is that commercial businesses have such a wide range of solid waste needs. You know, auto, uh, uh, mechanics, for example, will produce, uh, waste oil, that the, the town is not going to be equipped to dispose of properly in accordance with the hazardous material laws that are both federal and state in nature that govern the way that materials dispose, um, whereas another business might just have some cardboard boxes, or there might, you know, be an insurance agency that doesn't really generate any refuse at all. And so based on the difference in quantity and, uh, type of solid waste, we're just letting those commercial entities continue to contract with vendors directly to meet their direct needs because they're so varied. However, from the apartment complex, um, perspective, it is possible, and there are many municipalities throughout the state of North Carolina that do bring that service in-house, because at the end of the day, it's still a residential land use, right? So whether it's an apartment, or a three-bedroom home, or a two-bedroom home, as far as the types of waste, you're really talking about the same types of things, household garbage. And so, you know, the amount and quantity will vary, and maybe, you know, instead of a roll-out cart, for example, for an apartment complex, we'll use a compactor or several dumpsters, but at the end of the day, the town should be very well-equipped, especially as we move forward, to take care of that. So the question is, do we want to have the town bring that in-house, or do we want to have apartment complexes take care of it themselves? Uh, of course, the downside for having apartment complexes take care of it themselves is, some might not do as good a job as we expect, and some might do a better job than we expect. So the, the level of service is kind of hard to guarantee. Obviously, the town has a code enforcement officer, right? So the code enforcement officer can go around town and see that, hey, you know, there's a bunch of mattresses, or whatever the case is, sat next to your dumpster, need to take care of that, and we can issue a code violation, but I think we all agree that that's really not the situation that we want to be in. Um, of course, on the town side, you know, it creates a little bit of complexity, where at first, when we're bringing this service in-house, we're going to be well-equipped to do a, a standard roll-out cart service. You know, you have two or three or one roll-out cart, you know, we have the, the apparatus that's needed to provide that service, and so that'll be an easy thing to provide. Uh, roll-out cart is a little bit trickier, so we may end up contracting it ourselves, um, more than likely, but at least we have control over the service, and we're, and we have a, a, an higher or enhanced ability to maintain the overall appearance and management of that solid waste. So there's pros and cons to both aspects, and so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll just kind of throw that out there. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Hertz or Mr. Smith would like to make any comments to kind of prime your minds as you review these ordinances in greater detail, but essentially, the two versions are, one of them revising the town's solid waste code to update it in some ways that it needs to be updated, but still leaving the, the management of solid waste up to the apartment complex operator or the landlord, and then the other alternative version provides that the town will basically take over that entire service, and then the apartment complex will pay a per-unit fee, which is equal to the fee that a standard home would pay. You know, and, and again, the idea is that we're not, we're not, it's not, it's not charging like a, a, a typical good as service in that, you know, much in the same way as police services, you know, you don't get a discount on your taxes because you didn't call the police department any given year. The, the, the purpose of the, of the fee is to take the entire cost of managing solid waste town-wide and divide it amongst the taxpayers equally, you know, obviously based on a pro rata valuation of property and things of that nature, but it's kind of built in, um, built in in, in, in that way. So, Mr. Smith, did you have anything else that you wanted to share?
I've wrapped up and finished the sound, but I'll move to help answer questions for the meeting.
And of course, we'll have a public hearing on this topic at your next meeting, and the idea is that after that meeting, you'll have another month or so to kind of digest the constituents' concerns and the feedback that you receive, and then we'll make the final decision about this in March. Um, Mr. Hertz, if you'd like to make any comments at this time.
Um, I mean, I think if we draw our attention, that, um, I'm, I'm not the majority owner of that property, but I would say that through the discussions that were there, and with my father, the way I understand it, that fourteen, there was an ordinance change because the town of Youngsville didn't want to get into the commercial compactor disposal. So at one point in time, Youngsville had the opportunity of doing that, and then through a, a dummy change, an ordinance change, it turned back over to the apartment community here in town. And so since fourteen, that, the owners of that property have maintained that, and what I understand during the holiday season, there was some trash, it got backed up, there was some issues with the compactor there for a couple of days, and, uh, there were two separate instances in, in the month of December that it brought their attention and needed to be addressed, and I believe since that time, it, it has been addressed and it's been maintained, so, um, from, from, I don't understand, on their behalf, but I would say that the perspective that, you know, it was, it was, uh, needed to be addressed, it's been addressed, and I feel like that they're probably going to want to defer back to the way, you know, originally it was. I do think that there probably needs to be some kind of penalty as the apartment complexes start coming online, just the town of Youngsville not taking over themselves. I do feel like there needs to be some type of penalty implemented of a complex maintaining property, just like you would in any, any other community that you would have, you know, whether it be solid waste, or, you know, pets, or gauzes, or trash bag on the side of the road. Nobody wants a property better maintained than, than a partner owner, I can assure you, because they want to try to get the best as many as possible, and perhaps, and the people who you needed in order to, 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 uh, of a complex on, uh, you know, I, I, I think there was an issue, it's brought their attention, it's been addressed, um, but I'll let them, you know, during the next session, talk a little bit more of that, but I do think it needs to be strict penalties with the complex, isn't being taken care of, that, that, you know, they may be given a warning, but then after that, I think it needs to be, needs to be fine. So, that's all I have. Thank you, George.
Absolutely. Taking this order. Uh, just one more comment, so, um, and as, as Mr. Hertz mentioned, the only apartment complex in town is, is Hanson Hills, right? So, you know, we're talking about right now, we want an apartment complex, but of course, Mr. Hertz, you know, is going to be building a complex up on South College, and there might be others, and so, you know, we want to be forward-thinking in how we want to manage the situation moving forward, um, keeping in mind that as good stewards as the Hertz are of our community, et cetera, um, you know, we want to set policy that will apply equally to all, um, you know, potential vendors and, and owners of apartment complexes. Um, and that, as Mr. Hertz mentioned as well, the, the revisions in both versions that you have of the code address some of the issues about non-compliance. Uh, they provide, uh, penalties that are above the statutory minimum of fifty dollars. For example, the, the first violation is two hundred and fifty dollars with five hundred dollars, uh, penalty for additional violations. There's also, um, some curtailing of the, uh, appeal process that is standard in zoning type things, just because obviously we're talking about solid waste, there is kind of an imminent concern or threat to public health in certain circumstances, and so we felt that was necessary. Uh, but again, we, we'll discuss all this later.
Okay. Thank you for that information, as well as the clarification on the exact date. So, um, now that that's been amended and adjusted for the typo, I will, uh, again state that the action requested here is to schedule a public hearing for seven P M. on Thursday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, listen.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second there. Uh, is there any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? Motion carries, and that will be set for seven P M. on March eleventh. Next up, we've got a presentation of annexation petitions, uh, items I, 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 and I, 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 which are twenty twenty-one dash one, Holden Creek, Phase Six, twenty twenty-one dash four, East Woods Patterson, Phase Seven, and twenty twenty-one dash five, Holden Creek, Phase Six. Madam clerk?
The phase six of Holden Creek Preserve, um, was the first one received this year, that's why it's, um, twenty twenty-one dash one. Um, after we initially received the application, they sold the property, some of the lots in Helenworth, and, um, a, a, sort of builders out there. So they postponed their annexation petition until after the sale was finalized. Once the sale was completed, both Holden Creek Preserve and Helenworth have updated their annexation petition.
Okay.
So between both owners, you have the entirety of Phase Six, and then East Woods Patterson, Phase Seven, is that backside, kind of, um, a joint country road area.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then item B is resolutions directed in court, some vesting date petition received under General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, uh, for items I, 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 and I, 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 which I feel like a pirate all of a sudden, um, which are twenty twenty-one dash one, Holden Creek, Phase Six, twenty twenty-one dash Holden, East Woods, uh, Patterson, and twenty twenty-one dash five, Holden Creek, Phase Six. Action requested here is to approve the three resolutions.
I'm moved to approve the three resolutions.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item E, presentation of certificates of sufficiency for annexations, twenty twenty-one dash one, Holden Creek, Phase Six, twenty twenty-one dash four, East Woods Patterson, twenty twenty-one dash five, Holden Creek, Phase Six.
Um, and it is a big game, um, early enough for me to be able to do the investigations already. Um, I have verified the ownership of a new new some lot, um, in Holden Creek Preserve. I've also verified signatures as all three annexations are company-owned, and verified the signatures of the company representatives for all three companies they are about.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Uh, so then finally, item F, is resolutions fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one, which is, uh, one, two, and three, twenty twenty-one dash one, Holden Creek, Phase Six, twenty twenty-one dash four, East Woods Patterson, Phase Seven, twenty twenty-one dash five, Holden Creek, Phase Six. Uh, the action requested here is to approve three resolutions setting public hearings for March eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
I'm moved to approve the three resolutions.
All right, we've got a first and a second there. Uh, any discussions, discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? All right. Uh, reports on other business, I'll go first. I'll go ahead and preemptively congratulate Phil. He's, um, gonna have his hands full in the next couple of weeks. Uh, it's gonna be a great ride, and he's gonna do a great job, and really enjoy it. Um, the only other thing that I had is a issue that just continuously comes up, and I know Commissioner Headland can appreciate it because he's always attacking the same thing, the dropping kids off, going to the middle school, trash situation on these roads is god awful, and, uh, again, I don't know what we can do to fix it, I don't know if we can open up and, and increase fines for people that get caught doing it. I don't think a, a, North Carolina law, I guess it's what, two hundred dollars for littering or something like that? Two hundred dollars, I mean, um, we gotta do something to make it hurt. I know this is a situation where we've got to catch people doing, and do it proven, but I'm telling you, it's, it's absolutely out of hand. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I know, and, you know, I had a afternoon meeting yesterday at Old Liberty, and on the way there, just seeing the trash on the sides of the roads going down, it was insane, but I'm telling you, Cedar Creek is disastrous. So, uh, I know this outside of a curfew a little bit because outside of town limits, but, um, yeah, if anybody has any boil-in ideas on how we can curb that, I would definitely love to hear it, see if we can get something implemented.
I did that, I did.
You absolutely?
I, I, before I came here, I had a, a phone call with Carl, with Congress, called him. Carl, I think, did this over, and he was saying the same, exactly, during your conversation about, I'm probably jumping ahead, but there is going to be a massive road, hopefully the twenty-seventh of March.
Okay.
That'll be, it's going to be an annual event, but that's not going to solve the problem.
Right.
You know, uh, I, I, in the past, uh, the county sheriff had inmates coming, but ever since that stopped, it's gotten worse. Not that that was all that ended, all that, but I, I'm wondering if there's something we can do to maybe kickstart that again, and, you know, I'll be part of the meeting. Um, anyway, yeah, I, I had a, a meeting with Carl, and these were some words I've never even heard. Director, I mean, what I, and I did advise him, you know, it's the top of Michael Schreiber, he knows, he knows, like, I did, I said, you know, he, he realizes that the town thinks that it's really, it's bad.
Yeah, and, and I applaud your efforts to keep the town, and the Kiwanis doing amazing job doing that as well, but, you know, while it's not in the town limits, it's still Youngsville, and if we're going to take pride in the community we serve, I think it's kind of an all-hands-on- deck scenario, but, um, it certainly, it's been an issue for, for a long time. It just, I don't know, it just seems to continuously get worse, so, again, I'm open to any suggestions as to how we can curb it because it just continuously gets worse and worse, so.
I know Carl also brought up, could, could the town say, the county, or whatever, I'm not sure that's the way to go, or not, like, oh, I bring it up, so we didn't even talk about that, not talking about, I don't know, I think we could be the better solution.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions whatsoever, so.
I think the chief can probably engage the Franklin County Sheriff's office, see if they might be willing to use some of the inmate labor, I think that's an excellent idea. Um, and I know Sheriff Winstead is an excellent partner of ours, always very open-minded, so, and I, I think they've kind of reinvigorated, uh, meeting on a periodic basis, the law enforcement chiefs in all the municipal, um, governments in, in Franklin County as well as the sheriff, um, and so I, I think that that might be an excellent opportunity, even if it's, hey, you know, every four months, you get some inmates, you know, so it's, you know, Franklin County gets its turn, Bun gets its turn, you know, Youngsville gets its turn, uh, Lewisburg gets its turn, and then also the unincorporated areas, but I think that's a good idea, we can certainly engage on that.
All right. That's all I have. Um, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cordero.
Thank you for your well wishes, I appreciate it very much. Uh, very thankful for the board's support. Um, I think that one of the, one of my greatest, uh, I, I don't want to say achievements, but I can't think of a better word right now, I guess, over, over the last two years, is, is through your support, allow, you know, getting the right people assembled on the town team, and I think, you know, between Chief Randy and Emily and, and, and everybody else, you know, Andrew, um, who was here, you know, before me, so I can't take credit for Andrew, um, or at least, uh, very little. Um, you know, the, the town is, is really doing great things for the community, and I feel, you know, the utmost confidence that everything will, will be fine in my absence, so I, I appreciate it very much. Certainly feel free to reach out to them. Unbeknownst to them, I, I, I provided the commissioners all of your direct contact information, so. So normally, I'm very, I'm very deliberate about asking them to, at least, when you get, they get direct requests from you to keep me informed, so I'm aware of everything going on in the battlefield, um, um, for, to steal military phrase, but I've given them clearance to, uh, work with you all directly as much as they need to, and to keep me updated on anything that might be emergency in nature. That's all I have. Uh, the Public Works Project is, is progressing, we're still on, still on target for June, we're moving into that building, and the Main Street Project is also, uh, on target as well. Actually, on, um, Monday's Franklin County Board of Commissioners meeting, they'll be approving the final interlocal agreement for the utility work, and that's the last thing that we're waiting on to advertise the project, so we should be able to move forward very quickly after that, so I look forward to providing an update to you, um, on that, but everything is going as planned. That's all I have, sir.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, we'll start with Commissioner Redd.
Yeah. All I had to talk was about this trash. I've got a little bit more to add.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. The gray state in church has a picture of the town, and they're going to be cleaning that, I thought I had a match with the diapods, but just, you know, it's going to be done this month. Um, David DeRosa's working with Carl, actually, and it's involving Wake Forest, um, Kewall Smith. We're gonna try, I'm not going to be part of that, but they're gonna, it's gonna be kind of a, almost a citywide event, including the two areas, the young one and Wake Forest on the twenty-seventh of March.
Okay.
Trying to get a lot of participants, so it's, uh, unfortunately, coinciding with the April, but, um, that, 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 I didn't.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Wiggins. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, only thing I've got is, uh, just riding around town, looking at stuff, uh, went down the muddy, the access point off of Holden Road, going from the parking lot to the sidewalk, we got there somewhere, it got rough all in, and where everybody's driving, we outdrive on it, so I, I, I feel probably more so, but, um, on it, so I, I don't make a problem more so, but, you know, it's, it's, with all this rain and everything else, it needs to be, the pavement, of course, needs to be extended out a little bit.
So you're talking about from, from the trail itself into the parking lot, right?
Right, where, you know, where, I'm sure the work trucks, where the guys down there building the fields, when they come off, when they drive all the way around Lower Luddy and come for film one or two, whatever it is, not film two, yeah, behind the cage, come out that way, and it's all, it's all rutted up, but.
Got it.
It's really about all I got.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Brink?
The Northeast Area Study update is coming to the end, and Monday, they're going to have a virtual, I believe they call it like a pop-up tent, where typically they would have meetings with the, with the public to come in and review the study results, but they're going to make it virtual, and they've shown it to Campo and to some of us at another meeting we had on Monday. And it's pretty neat, you kind of walk through the tent, and you go to the different stages, and it shows you interactive maps that you can click, and you can add comments to. They had a section earlier in the year where we could all provide comments, and then they have their results in there, and then this is the time for the public to go in and make further comments. So they wanted us to do our share of, you know, getting the word out, so that something we can share through the town.
Social media and website, yes, sir.
Like we did in the past, so I just wanted to mention that, and look out for it.
And if you'd like to go, go to it, or any questions about anything related to the Northeast Area Study, it's neasupdat.com, so Northeast Area Study, N-E-A-S, update.com. That has all the events and all the plans, things of that nature, for the comprehensive multimodal transportation, so it's not, not just traffic, parked vehicles, it's bike paths, pedestrian paths, rail, things of that nature.
Yeah, it was three different maps, it was roadway, and then pedestrian, and then...
Green lane rail, I think.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Brink? That's all I have. All right, any updates on finance?
No, sir.
All right.
I'm happy to take questions on anything finance-related.
All right, hearing none. We've got the fire department, I guess, annual report, the summer packets, feel free to take a look through that. Those guys continue to do a great job, commend them for staying as COVID-free as possible and mitigating all the risks that they essentially can, so. Turn it over to, maybe we have anything to add, other than your...
I'm going to add, if you see this board is the bottom of our, our current projects we're working on in the next year, this park is one of those projects we're doing. We have started turning the trees back, putting those trees, from some water, we've got some experience with load, load line units. So we started at the top on top, and we have cleared the, the concrete wall path there, so that driving up again will get faster, we're releasing people that we know, we're clear that, and we're going to the parks, and we are every time, we've come in and viewed the limbs and the trees, see the supply fans, or if there's anything unusual that we need to look at each per, go for. Hopefully, they'll be in the February report, we're going to do the park.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else? That is. All right, thanks so much. And we'll start over to, I like the way you did that, we've got two Mr. Smiths in a row here, Mr. Andrew Smith, yeah, I think the two, nothing, nothing above and beyond. Just want to make sure. It was a tie, I know, I know. Okay. Excuse me. Any updates on planning and zoning, Miss Flinger, other than what you've already submitted?
Uh, no, sir, nothing in addition to what's in my report.
All right, sounds good. And she's with us, anything above and beyond what you've already submitted in your report?
Yes, sir, I have to add.
All right, thanks for that. And Ms. Barbara Jones, you still with us, or do we switch it to three?
Sorry, I muted myself, but yes, I'm still with you. I don't have any formal reports to make right now, though. Thank you. Hope all y'all are having a good evening so far.
Okay, thank you so much. And turn it over to Madam Clark, does you have anything that you needed to discuss?
I have just a small update about the ABC Board. In the process of doing research, somebody else, me and Phil, discovered that the expiration dates of the members of the ABC Board, their termination date should be based on the creation of the ABC Board and not when the member is appointed. So it was created in 1971, and it originally remembers one for one year, one for two years, one for three years. So I've gone back and adjusted expiration dates based on the new information. And I've set the expiration date for him. This changed Sharon Howes' expiration date from February to June, so you will see in May, if Sharon Howes would like to be reappointed, that will come up in May. And then we still have two ABCs, but based on these new expiration dates, if someone wants to be appointed, anytime soon, they would have a year and a half, less than their term. I don't know if this will be helpful, if you're always somebody in, see if they just want to get their seat wet, and that way you're not just committing a full three years for a year and a half, or give them time to get into the company that's for them. But we do need to get volunteers as soon as possible. NCABC Commission has recommended we get someone as soon as possible. I will be in clerk school next week. I'll return to the college when possible. I'll be taking classes at town hall, so I'll have some time before and after classes, but I'll just return as soon as I can, and I have nothing to add to my report, and that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for that. There is no need to go into closed session, so the most popular item on the agenda is me entertaining a motion to adjourn. I'm ready to adjourn. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. And any opposed? You better not say no. All right, let's move to adjourn.